And at this point, we'd like to continue on with the testimony and comments of the folks who've been lined up waiting for their turn in it. Sir, if you could state your name and position.
Richard.
My name is Ray Martinez. I'm the resort manager at Hyatt Coconut Plantation Resort, a timeshare resort, and also the Coconut Plantation condominium association with a little over thirty-three hundred timeshare owners. We are also part of the beach project. We are in a land lease along with the Hyatt Hotel with Pelican Landing to care for, maintain, and utilize the island based on basically the usage percentage. We recently partnered, and I know there's a question about the partnership, we are in a land lease agreement with Pelican Landing to utilize the island and again, also help deal with its improvements and repairs. We just completed a beach re-nourishment project where Hyatt picked up fifty percent of the costs associated with re-nourishing that beach, and I can tell you that wasn't a small feat on anybody's radar. As far as food and beverage goes, the Hyatt Regency Coconut Point, and again, they're partners with us. We've been open for eleven years. They've been open for a little over twelve years, and in that twelve years, they've got a longstanding history of providing food and beverage services at their property, both from an outlet perspective as well as a catering perspective. And if you visit our properties, you would see nothing short of a controlled luxurious, high-class meal and food and beverage provider over there. So that would basically lead me to believe that that's the service that we're going to provide at Big Hickory Island. So, and again, we also control the usage of our restaurants. If you go down to our pool restaurants, which is probably the closest thing to compare the snack bar at the island to, we do control the use of those restaurants, meaning a non-guest doesn't go and have lunch at our pool bar without identification. We do find that out ahead of time, and that would be the case with this situation. So, in that, our owners have voiced their approval for this project, and Coconut Plantation is completely supportive of that.
Thank you, sir, for your information. Next participant, please, please state your name and location.
Thank you, Acting Chair. My name is Tom Betts. I live in Pelican Landing. I've been a resident of Pelican Landing for the past fifteen years, and I've seen the community mature and grow in my fifteen years, all to the betterment of the community and to the property values of Pelican Landing. And of course, I give a high five stars to our staff that have run our community and are active in managing our community. As to our request for zoning, and this is a zoning question before you, I support wholeheartedly the additional, the addition of beverages, and in the most sensitive area right now is the alcoholic beverages, which I think we can handle very, very appropriately. This in my, in my case, I have been involved in the beach park for the last several years, five years through the new nourishment program, where we have had many, many questions, technical, otherwise, political, opinions, you know, facts thrown at us that aren't factual, and facts that are supported by science. Throughout this whole environment, we have come from a, I would say, in running that, a fairly negative environment to a very positive environment, where today, our beach park is our most-used amenity in Pelican Landing. All I can say to you is, this is a process where our community is, continues to refine itself, and I look at this as a refinement. I am one-hundred percent behind it because I know we can manage ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, next comments, please. Name and where you live?
Shirley Witherington, resident of Pelican Landing for ten years.
Could you speak in the microphone, please?
Shirley Witherington, is that better? Shirley Witherington, resident of Pelican Landing for ten years. I'm a UIC representative, and I'm part of Turtle Time. I'm very supportive of our management and our board of directors. I think they do an excellent job, but I have to say that I have grave concerns about this request to put food and beverages on the beach, because I'm concerned about the environment. So although I'm not totally opposed to it, I think that in some ways, it needs to be limited and controlled, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir, thank you. Name and location?
Good morning. Paul Hoffler. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs and a resident of Pelican Landing. As a moderate tree hugger, I'm opposed to the commercial introduction of food and beverage service on the island. I believe it really destroys the preserved nature of the island. What is also evident today is, we've had excellent governance within Pelican Landing, and I think we've seen today a breakdown in some of the communication processes that are evident in this provision put before you today. I would urge this board to reconsider this application, send it back to the association, and allow them to address some of the issues that have been raised here today, and more importantly, to further engage the community in the development of that recommendation or proposal, so it fully reflects all the residents of Pelican Landing. This board, your board, has a responsibility to confirm community need and community benefit, and I don't think that's been documented to you today, and perhaps it is fully supported. I simply don't know, because nothing has been handled publicly to express that. So I would urge you to defer the recommendation or the proposal until a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, come forward. Your name and where you live, please.
Okay, my, my name is Craig Schoff. I live in Pelican Landing. I've lived in there since nineteen ninety-six, and I'm currently a member of the board at Pelican Landing. And as I watched the, and heard the comments today, it was sort of interesting. Over the years, I have been on the board of directors of a publicly-owned corporation with a lot of stockholders. I've been president of a golf club. I've been on the board of a hospital, and I was president of a homeowners' association in Michigan for a number of years. And one thing I learned over time is that when you're in a decision-making position, no matter what you decide, you're not going to make everybody happy. And clearly, there are a few people in Pelican Landing that don't agree with the direction we're going. Pelican Landing has around six thousand residents right now, thirty-one hundred front doors, around six thousand residents. Until today, I have really not talked to anybody who objected to serving food and beverages on the island. I am, and I don't think we have that kind of an issue, as some people do. I strongly support what the board is doing. I strongly support the direction we're going, and I encourage you to support it too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Your name and?
Roger Morgan, resident of Pelican Landing. Been there for about seventeen and a half years. I'm going to make it short, because I know everybody's tired. We looked for a place around Florida for about five years, and ended in Bonita Springs, which we think is almost paradise. The one thing we loved about it was the island, and today, we've been asking for getting some food out there for the people that visit. That would make it a total paradise. And all I can say is, I don't really know Marie Martel. I've never really officially met her, but she runs that place like an iron fist, and she's done an extremely good job out on that, out on the island. I mean, she's the one that drove the, getting the thing going as far as the re-nourishment. She's a great person. Like I say, I don't really know her, but Pelican Landing has raised over five hundred thousand dollars for Lee Hospital. That's the kind of work that she does. Then, on the other hand, I'm the chairman of a company, a mid-sized company up in Michigan. We have a board meeting at the Hyatt every January, and while we're in the board meeting, the spouses like to go out to the island, but they've stopped doing that because they don't get lunch out there. So now they're going down to docks and going on that beach. So I'm urging you to support this thing, and let's finish the paradise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, please state your name and where you live.
My name is Bruce Wheatley. I live on Wood Sage Drive. I've been a resident here since nineteen ninety-four. I have owned three pieces of property in Pelican Landing, so you might say I'm a Pelican Landing lifer. I make very, two very, very brief remarks. One, the Hyatt is a first-class property, and I salute these fellows. When we were trying to do the beach re-nourishment project, which a number of people worked on, to say they're not a partner, I think is unfair. The amount of money spent on that project was two-point-eight million dollars. One-point-four million was put up front by the Hyatt. That is a first-class operation. I trust them thoroughly. I've been at that property many, many times through the Bonita Springs Speakers Assembly. I've worked with them. I've worked with them on a literacy council and a number of other organizations. What they say they will do, they will deliver. I think you're placed in an awkward position. Many of these issues you have heard are governance issues. I don't think that's something you want to address. Your board, or our board, has voted one way or the other and submitted this proposal to go forward. If there is dissent, the dissent is not to be addressed, in my opinion, by the zoning board. It should be addressed by the residents. I urge you to support this measure, approve it, and move forward with it. It is a tremendous amenity. There are maybe some logistical issues. I'm convinced they could be worked out. We have a terrific community, and I'm deeply proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, your name and where you live, sir, please?
My name is Jet Tipton. The name is Jet Tipton, and I live in Pelican Landing. Very brief, I think we have two issues going here. One, as was just stated, governance, and the other is the zoning. And I think the staff's recommendation should be adhered to, and I think maybe the board needs to revisit, our board needs to revisit some of the ways we handle things. But as far as the rezoning goes, I think it's a benefit to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Your name and where you live, please?
My name is Larry Bell. I've been a resident in Pelican Landing since nineteen ninety-four. I sell real estate in the area, and on numerous occasions, the people that I bring into Pelican Landing and tell them about the island, they want to know of food served there. Know you have to take your own. That is a negative to them. They would like to have the ability to buy food out there. Now, I know there are those in here that are afraid that by the introduction of beverages and that, and food, that it will drastically increase the overload on the septic system. I can assure you, about seventy percent of that, as the guests return to the water, it'll be taken care of. Thank you.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
My name's Mark Hamslick, and I live in Bonita Springs. I've been here for about ten years now. I'm not a member of Pelican Landing, or the Hyatt, or anyone else. I'm just a resident who likes to kayak out to the beach, and it's a very nice beach. It's one of the few beaches that are almost not touched with all your hotels and restaurants and bars and bands. There's people who come out here who like to sit on the beach, relax. It's nice and quiet, listen to the water. You have many people coming from the Hyatt and Pelican Landing, walking down the beach, many more now that they've joined, and there's a lot more garbage on the beach. I, myself, and a lot of other people go around and pick it up when we're there. When we want to have lunch, we bring our lunch with us. We don't bring alcohol there, because alcohol is not allowed on the beaches. We don't bring our dogs there. People who do should be fined, I agree. But I don't think we need any more people drinking alcohol on the beach, bringing more garbage on the beach, more papers, things that's just going to clutter it up, and the next thing you know, you're going to start building more buildings on there. I don't think this should go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any further citizen comments at this point? And I would ask Mr. Hart, who has the opportunity to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to cut it back quite a bit. Most of what I think you heard from the opposition was about the internal workings of the community association. You heard specifically from three of the current board members of the association who, I'm sorry, let me get a little closer. Three current board members came before you, and Mr. Schoff, Mr. Tipton, Mr. Murphy, and said, this association wants this change. They're asking you to approve it. It's, they represent the six thousand or so residents of the community. They are elected, whether they, some actually had opposition, but whether they did or not, that's the process. They're elected. They're, they're serving without any compensation. They're trying to be good neighbors. They're trying to take care of their community. And as you heard, the community has an exemplary track record. They take care of this beach park. What many of the opposition wanted to talk about was that they didn't know, or they weren't told. Well, there's a process, and if they didn't know, that's unfortunate, and maybe, let's just be upfront, maybe the association could have done a better job of communicating. But, but that doesn't mean that the association representing the vast majority of the members doesn't want this or shouldn't have this, this project approved. I would ask you to look specifically at the staff recommendation. They're the experts on zoning. This is about zoning. It's not about how the association should work. The staff recommendation recommends approval. They put conditions on, and we have agreed to every one of those conditions. We're, we understand. We're not, as I said, this, this park has been well-taken care of for many, many years. It will continue to be well-taken care of. The permitting issue, this is a first step. If, if the city wouldn't allow, doesn't allow this special exception, there's no reason to go to the health department. There's no reason to go to anybody else for any other approval. I want to quickly point out, this is not a, not a first step to an expansion of the beach park. There's no building permit contemplated. Nobody's got any plans for one. That's just pure speculation intended to have you worry about it and try to take up for, take up the role of the Pelican Landing Board on behalf of a few minority of residents who are opposed to this. I think you could accept the fact, or I hope you will accept the fact, that the elected representatives are representing the vast majority of the residents, and they're the ones that are asking for this. You heard about jet skis, and let me just quickly say, we, the association doesn't allow jet skis. Those jet skis were brought in by some third party to the shore. They can't come into the beach park. That's private property. But we don't control the actual shore. That's public property of all the islands in Lee County and in the city, for that matter. But we had nothing to do with it. Our, our rangers would discourage it, but they can't go down on the shore and tell people what they can and can't do, because that's public property. They can call the authorities, and I understand they did that. Let's talk about the music, because that seems to be a great concern. If you look at the condition on music, it allows the association to do exactly what they can do today. There's worry about live entertainment, but live entertainment includes the guy with his guitar that stands out there and plays. It includes the guy, the amplified music includes the lady who brings her radio or her iPod and plays a little music on the beach. As long as it doesn't violate the city's noise ordinance, that can be done today. And the, and the purpose of that condition and the way it's written is just to say that this approval, if granted, will not further limit, will not take away rights of the association that they had before they asked for the approval. And I'd invite you to take a hard look at that. The only change I would request on behalf of the association is, in, as I said earlier, on that condition, we would like it to say that music could also be allowed under the specific approval of a city special permit. Again, because that's what they could do today. That's what anybody could do today on their private property. Liquor was a last-minute addition. I told you. I suggested it. Mr. Betts, a former board member and very much involved in the re-nourishment process, he stood right here and said to you, this is a, this is a process. We're coming of age. We are getting better at what we do. We are improving for our residents, this beach park. And, and so, the, the next step is, we've proved what we can do. We'd like to have food and some beverages for people. We'd like to eliminate some of those coolers that come, some of those other things that come to the beach. And one of the things people want to bring is, is beer and wine, so we've asked for beer and wine. Their lawyer saying, you know, I know it's a process. There could be a day when you want, you want alcohol. And so let's just ask for that, because the alcohol is governed by the Hyatt's liquor license. If the Hyatt can get approval to sell liquor, beer, wine, any of those things at the beach park, and it's managed just as everything else at the beach park is managed, then what is wrong with that? It's really not alcohol, hard liquor. It's not different from beer and wine in that context, with all the limitations that are placed on the use of, or the sale or consumption of alcohol. The questions about the health department, let me just offer to you, the, the beach park manager is here, Tom Schimmannauer. I'll ask him to come up if you have questions about the septic tank, about any potential harm to the environment. He can also tell you about his and his rangers' efforts to clean up the beach when people leave their plastic bags and so forth on the beach. He can tell you about how they manage the conservation areas that are all around the pavilion. He can tell you about the turtle time and the shore birds and all of that, if you would like to hear from him. I'm not going to present him unless you would like to hear from him. And that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. At this point, I might ask our attorney to give our board some guidance before we start our questions. You know, we have, we have heard some dissenting remarks from, that were very respectfully, respectfully received. Those comments really relate to internal organization, internal management, the requirement of the, does the board clearly represent the membership? That's not an issue I believe that we need to discuss as a zoning issue, but could you give us some guidance, counselor, on how we might frame our questions as we go forward?
Absolutely. Consistent with the Land Development Code, Chapter Four, I believe it's in Section 131, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, because we just went through codification. Special exceptions are to be reviewed based on certain findings, and you are to stay within the scope of how to look at a special exception. So what you're looking at is if the special exception is conditioned, and we'll talk about conditions in a minute, if it meets or exceeds the performance or locational standards set forth for the proposed use, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the goals, objectives, and policies, is compatible with existing or planned uses in the surrounding area, will not cause damage, hazard, nuisance, or other detriment to persons or property, and will be in compliance with all general provisions and supplemental regulations pertaining to the use set forth in the Land Development Code. Now, and you guys all get that or understand that. Now, as to the conditions, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of things, and one of the things, for example, Citizen brought up the issue of the sunshine law. Well, he's talking about the sunshine law for homeowners' associations. The city sees that as an internal issue of Pelican Landing, and that's not something that we review. That would not be a basis or appropriate for a basis of review, no different than if a couple got a permit and the, the wife wanted a room developed one way, a husband wanted a room developed another way. We stay out of those issues. You do not really want government involved, and we find that to be internal within their development. There were some good points that were raised. I did modify one condition as it was being discussed. The conditions that are being proposed right now is the approval is limited to a four COP or lesser alcoholic beverage license for the pavilion and outdoor deck area, as depicted in the attachment. Now, with that being said, the city is saying we will allow up to a four COP, which would be a full liquor license. That does not prevent the applicant for going forward with a beer and wine license at this time, if that's something that they desire to do, but recognize that they do not have to come back to the city if they decide to modify, decide that they do want that full liquor. So unless you feel that there's a distinction between beer and wine and hard liquor at the area, staff recommends the four COP. The second condition was modified since the staff report, and it says the sale of alcoholic beverages may occur only between eleven AM and dusk, eleven AM to dusk, and must be sold through an authorized service staff within the licensed area. The licensed area, again, is that attachment, and it's just the pavilion area. So it, you know, they are not to be serving on the beach. They are not to be serving where the boats are. So if, let's say, they wanted to greet people with a glass of wine or beer when they've got off the boat, this would not come under that. If they had a special event permit for do that, that could happen. The condition further reads, because sometimes Pelican Landing has events there that are not related to this particular COP, that any alcohol served after dusk is permitted by private party only, and subject to licensure by the caterer or entity obtaining the separate license. So there'd be a separate liquor license that would be obtained, a temporary license, no different, when somebody has a special event, like a party, you get the caterers to get the license, but it could be some other entity if the applicant can do that. I don't believe there was changes to Number Three, which requires signage that no alcohol is permitted beyond the pavilion's deck area. Consumption of alcohol on the beach is prohibited, and that's by, and though there's city ordinance, we do not allow alcohol to be served on any of our wet sand areas, the beach, wet sand, dry sand. All food and bev, all food, beverages, and supplies must be brought to the licensed area, again, it's just the pavilion, and removed daily. Straws are prohibited, and that was a request, I believe, of Turtle Time. The next one is all solid waste from the food service and beverage consumption must be removed from the licensed area by the vendor daily, and the price change should read applicant. I just picked that one up. The next one, and this is a condition that was changed as a result of testimony, Mr. Brunswick had mentioned it during the course of it. If you want the change, I'll add it. If you tell me no, that's fine, too. This approval does not eliminate any other permits for food and beverage service as required by the city or any other agency. This may include any additional health, environmental, or sanitation permits necessary for the facility as a result of food and beverage service. So if, you know, we had testimony today that there was concern as to the septic tank, to the potable water, we'll have it in there. Condition Number Seven, I don't believe staff is objecting to the changes. I'm giving a little look at Ms. Gensen here, but would read, and this is what Mr. Hart is proposing, but I can read you the staff modification one, too. Outside entertainment will not exceed the noise ordinance as amended unless the applicant has obtained a special event permit. Amplified music is prohibited from May one through October thirtieth due to potential disturbance to sea turtles and shorebird roosting and nesting. And we do have Mr. Kirby avail, I think we have Mr. Kirby available. We had him sworn in. If you have any questions as to the shorebird or issue, or as to sea turtles, which, March first?
Shorebirds, yes.
So it would be prohibited from March 1st through October 30th? Okay.
Two extra months off for the shorebirds.
Okay, that needs to be good. It's good to have extra people in here. So that was changed to March 1st. So they would be allowed from November, I guess, November 1 to February 28, unless it's a leap year, 29, to be allowed to have amplified music. And then the special exception is limited to Pelican Landing Community Association in its partnership with Hyatt Regency Coconut Point. Any change in ownership or operational entity will require a new special exception for consumption on premises and any live and/or amplified music. And then violation of these conditions may result in revocation of this approval in accordance with LDC 4-1261, which is the alcohol section. Is there any questions?
So that means there are two modifications that you're suggesting, the Number 6 and Number 7. Is that correct?
That's Number 7 and Number 6 were changed, and then I believe I'm changing Number 5. Where it says vendor, it should be applicant. So it's the applicant or designated. We probably shouldn't have vendor in there.
Is there a consensus on the board that those are acceptable changes at this point? There is a consensus that this board agrees to those changes?
Now, we also received another, Mr. Louz had sent in a copy of an email, and that is an internal method of their existing operational requiring the badge or, you know, or the room, I keep calling it a room key. Nobody's had a room key in probably a couple decades, but the room card, room entry card. That is an operational. We could add things in there to make it more restrictive. I do not encourage that because of the fact that, you know, things may change in technology as to how they identify. But that's up to this board.
So the consensus of this board that that's not a necessary inclusion at this point? That's our consensus?
I agree.
On Number 9, can we, the word "may" be resolved?
Could you speak in the thing, because we need to get you on the record, too?
Thank you. Number 9, it says, "A violation of these conditions may." Can that word "may" be a little bit stronger than just "may" result?
We could put "will," except the "will," you still have the modifier, violation of these conditions. There'd have to be a finding of fact that there is a violation, a hearing to that effect. I don't think it makes a difference. I'm not a big fan of "will," because then I'll have citizens demanding that we do that revocation immediately. Let's not necessarily have the complete hearing. We all know that they violated. I tend to like the word "may." I mean, it gives council the discretion, but it also gives discretion for council to do other things.
I'd like to have it, if I could, changed to "will" or a stronger word than "may."
Could?
Well, "could" is the same as "may." Or maybe put so many violations, limited violations, it'll do it.
We could change it. How about "could"? I can't hear you.
Yeah, he mentioned the same thing.
Could.
We'll change it to "could."
Change it to "could." Is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah.
Change it to "could." Change to "could." Thank you. At this point, it's appropriate for members of our board to ask questions of any of the citizens who've had comments, and also of Mr. Hart, who represents the applicant. Questions from our group?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement. Several people got up and concerned about control and so forth. That's not our, with all due respect, that's not our job to control. I mean, you know, if you have a problem with your board, this is where you got to go, your board. Not here. We can't control that, what you're doing or how you police it. That's not our, we can't have that. We can't do that. So for everybody that came up and complained about it, talk to your board. You don't like the way they do their job, kick them off the board. Thank you.
Marcus, you know, the application is from PLCA. That's the way the application was submitted. And the first paragraph states, "The beach park is for the private use of Pelican Landing residents, Hyatt Regency Coconut Retreat guests, and Hyatt Regency Timeshare residents, all of whom are members of the Pelican Landing Community Association." So the way this application was presented to us, it's speaking in one voice. I agree with what Mr. Insirpi said. I live in a gated community as well, and you either love the board or you don't love the board. That's my only comment.
Question for Mr. Hart. You might want to elaborate on this. I think in the write-up that was prepared by staff, the comment was made that at the heart of this question is the issue of commercialization. Could you make some comments and share your views on that issue with us?
Yes, sir. As was just said, the key is that this is a privately-owned parcel. The use that's being asked for is for members of the association that owns it and their guests. It's not for anyone else. It's not a whole lot in concept. It is not different from me asking one of my family members to come to my backyard and help me cater a party. Hyatt and the Timeshares are members of the association. They pay their dues, just like every resident does. And we think, not only is that a benefit to them, but it's a benefit to us because they are paying half of the freight. And part of the impetus for what we're asking today is that residents also want food and beverages on the island. That's, I don't know, is that helpful to you?
That's helpful. Thank you.
And I guess I should say, you know, there's no intent, in fact, it would be objected to and prevented if members of the public try to take advantage of the food and beverage service that's available on this island. It's always been private. The public has always been excluded, and the beach park manager and his rangers are instructed to tell people, "This is a private island. You can't come here and use our facilities." I hope that helps.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Guess we can move to the vote?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation with said corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, and just also with the conditions that all other necessary permitting and approvals are done as well. I make that motion.
Right.
Second.
Have a vote on the motion?
Chairman Donnelly?
Are we voting on the -- this is the vote, right, as amended? We all understand what's before us. Is there any need to reread this? Anybody? Okay, would you proceed with calling the roll for the final vote?
Chairman Donnelly?
Yes.
Frank Lyles?
Yes.
Pete Pastore?
Yes.
Mark Nosbaum?
Yes.
Robert Insirpi?
Yes.
Thank you. The yeses have it. The motion is passed. At this time, rather than moving on immediately to the next item on the agenda, this board and this meeting will adjourn until 2:00 P.M.